The 5:00 PM agenda review session will begin now, followed by the city council meeting. Number two to five, approval of minutes for correspondence, public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading, number one, an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking, Section 1020, 010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, adding 25 Delphio Street. We have ordinances on first reading, number one, an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17, Zoning, Regarding Several Proposed Amendments from Master Plan Reexamination Report. Number two is an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1016, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 1016, 050, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, in regards to George Street, Andy Street, Jones Avenue, and Sedan Street. We have Resolutions 1 through 26, except for two that were pulled at the request of the city administration. Number one is to approve amendments. Number two is approved payroll. Three is authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four is approved ABC liquor license for 2526. Five is approved request for a street closure requested by our Lady of Mount Carmel Roman Catholic Church with a patronist procession. Six is approved request for use of city property by the Reform Church of Highland Park Affordable Housing Corporation, Mommy's Square Park. Seven is approved amendment of Resolution R. 062458, extend contract for one additional year with Triad Advisory Services Incorporated doing business as Triad Associates for Community Development Block Grant Program. Number eight is approved resolution to refer to amendment of zoning ordinance to the planning board to review and report in regards to several proposed amendments from the master plan reexamination report. Number nine is authorized refund to Verizon, New Jersey, in a total amount of $108,269.46 against 2025 taxes on block 90, Lot 1, due to No 6 County Board judgment. Ten is approved relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Bragona Crane Company for a crane at 2 Albany Street. Eleven is authorized application and execution of grant agreement with 2026 transportation trust fund program, New Jersey Department of Transportation. Twelve is approved amendment of Resolution R. 052582, additional amount of $10,000 with Dwyer Connell in this moment. Thirteen is approved rejection of a bid for furniture delivered source water monetary. Fourteen, approved award of contract with Gold Standard Diagnostics Horsham LLC. Fifteen is approved release of performance guarantee escrow deposit for VIP Repair LLC. Sixteen is approved award of contract with Fisher Contracting for milling of various city streets to the Department of Public Works and Water Utility. Seventeen has been pulled. Eighteen is approved request for use of city property requested by the Tavern Aquabaptist Church, the church service and church gathering at Recreation Park. Number nineteen is approved amendment of Resolution R. 072433, extending the contract for one additional year with Northeast Water Technology for contract services for systemwide locker-based water detection services. Twenty, approved request for use of city property requested by Romaris Unidas USA, Buglo Park, the large pavilion. Twenty-one, approved request for the use of city property requested by Abundant Life Family Church, again, Buglo Park, the large pavilion, and grassy area, et cetera. Twenty-two has been pulled. Twenty-three, approved amendment of Resolution R. 112317, additional amount of $30,000 with Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company for sanitary sewer pump station maintenance. Twenty-four, approved authorization to rebid the furniture delivered to 2025 for newer Ford Explorer as your equivalent for the water utility. Twenty-five, approved award of contract with Gold Type business team doing GTBM for proprietary software license for the police department. And twenty-six is approved amendment of Resolution R. 042525, extending the contract for one additional year with Tracer LLC for stormwater utility platform and professional services. We have adjourned your discussion by council and public conference. We have a date to remember is the next city council meeting, July 16. We have the agenda review session and the council meeting will follow. Okay, call the mord?
Councilmember Escobar will be late. Councilmember Ferguson is excused. Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskins.
There.
Councilmember Secora Lovely.
Here.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Here.
Council President Anderson.
Here.
Please be advised that the notice required to the old public meeting act that you have complied with is satisfied, and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in City Hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick named The Home News Tribune. Please stand to pledge allegiance to the count.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, our moment of silence for our men and women in our military, here and abroad. We also want to remember our police and firemen, EMT workers, and all those who are put in arms, but... Thank you.
Hold on a second. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Lovely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. And as a correspondent, the director to the appropriate departments.
Yes, Council President, as a correspondent, you see, the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
No public hearings. We have ordinance or discussion on second reading. Number one is an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking, Section 1020, 010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, adding 25 Delphio Street. Do any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, we're prepared to open up the public hearing on this ordinance only. Roughly five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council by approaching the microphone. Seeing none.
Any ordinance, second?
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two is an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking, Section 1020, 010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, adding 25 Delphio Street. Do any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, we're prepared to open up the public hearing on this ordinance only. Roughly five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council by approaching the microphone. Seeing none.
Any ordinance, second?
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Lovely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinances on first reading, an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17, Zoning, in regards to proposed amendments for master plan reexamination report.
I move the ordinance sitting down July 16, 2025, Friday, Friday, same day to be addressed.
Second?
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Lovely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinances on first reading, an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17, Zoning, in regards to proposed amendments for master plan reexamination report.
I move the ordinance sitting down July 16, 2025, Friday, Friday, same day to be addressed.
Second?
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Lovely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinances on first reading, an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17, Zoning, in regards to proposed amendments for master plan reexamination report.
I move the ordinance sitting down July 16, 2025, Friday, Friday, same day to be addressed.
Second?
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Lovely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two is an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general notices of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1016, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 1016, 050, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, in regards to George Street, Andy Street, Jones Avenue, and Sedan Street.
I move the ordinance sitting down July 16, 2025, Friday, Friday, same day to be addressed.
Second?
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We next have Resolutions 1 to 26, except for two. Do any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on these resolutions? Good. Mr. Dominguez, number eight, you have talked about them.
Certainly, Council President, thank you. So, in June, after much time working on it, Big Bell Planning presented the master plan reexamination report to the planning board, which adopted it with several recommendations. This is a first pass at the easier recommendations to transform into ordinance for modification to our zoning ordinance. I'll give, it's a little chunky of an ordinance, as you've probably seen, but it really only does four things, this piece, at a high level. So first, it eliminates our existing kind of clunky overlay zones that we've used over the last four or five years to piece together different things like cannabis, or dealing with some straggler homes in a high-rise district, so enable them to continue to be permitted uses, and it eliminates these overlays and subsumes them into the underlying zoning districts, either as permitted uses in some cases, or conditional uses in other cases, as best applicable. On Easton Avenue, with our master plan from 2022, I recommended splitting the corridor of what was the C3D, which is basically roughly from Somerset/Convick Street up to Huntington Street, with the hospital side, into three separate districts. That has proven to also be kind of clunky. This would recombine them into, once again, the C3B, with the exception that it would expand the C4 district, the downtown zoning district, which extends up to Somerset Street on one side of the street, and up to Convick Street on the other end, it would extend it up to approximately Hamilton Street on the right-hand side, if you're going north out of town, it would go up to and inclusive of the Thomas Sweets Building. And on the other side, it extends just past Hamilton Street to include the Verve, since it's such a big high-rise, it is a natural fit to be within that zoning district. And lastly, it creates adaptive reuse criteria and enabling part of our ordinance specifically for the C3A district, which most people would better understand as Livingston Avenue and the corridor of Livingston Avenue with the large older homes that have been converted into offices. We've been seeing many of them get knocked down and turn into apartment buildings, and while, I don't have any objection to the development of housing units there, because you can have a mixed-use apartment building there now, you can just only have a ground floor office. This recommendation allows for the ground floor to not have to be commercial, which we've experienced at many times interest from prospective developers to do so, and when facing the prospect of having to get a variance for that among other costs related to that, as variance or something like that might run them out of their own pocket, over $100,000 plus the risk, it encourages developers to push and buy the building and knock it down and run the risk of just getting something bigger and not keeping the architectural interestingness of the corridor intact. And so, that adaptive reuse would allow buildings to stay, but just be retrofitted interiorly and keep some of that interesting architecture that we have in that corridor alive for a longer period.
Number nine, Mr. Chami, we have over $108,000 refund.
Yes, Council President, members of council, this is the final piece of the settlement we entered into with Verizon. Do you recall back in April, council authorized resolution on tax appeals that stemmed back to 2012, the issue of the personal property tax on equipment that Verizon maintained in the city? Years ago, this was a tax that was readily allowed. Verizon filed tax appeals back in 2012, and every year thereafter, dealing with their equipment and the percentage of market share that they have relative to hard-wired copper equipment, without going into the nuances of the statute of case law, the case came out of a different municipality, which basically sided with Verizon, saying that the city could no longer tax this personal property. As a result of that, our tax council worked with the attorney for Verizon, and we arrived upon a settlement, quite good settlement, quite frankly, because had we had to reimburse Verizon for the taxes we collected back since 2012, that number was over $3.4 million. So, the deal was is that we only reimburse taxes for calendar year 2025, and we don't tax on the personal property going forward. This resolution authorizes that particular refund of $108,000, which they take for calendar year 2025, and this, like I said, is the final piece of the resolution of that litigation involving Verizon.
Okay. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, I think they, well, $3.4 million is enough to cover it.
We thank them very much. Mr. Valenti, item number 16, the milling of various city streets, which ones?
Yes, Council President, specific to this resolution, that'll be the milling of Reed Street between Joyce Kilmer and Livingston, Redmond Street between Paul Robinson and Thrup, Howard Street between Rowan Avenue and Joyce Kilmer, Juliette Street between Lee and Remsen, and Richmond Street between Nielsen and Burnett.
Right. While you're up there, number 23, has a change order that's not too big, $30,000.
Yes, this is an annual contract that we bid for the maintenance of our pump stations, of which we have six in town. We generally use, I believe it's a $35,000 or $50,000 limit, some years or under, some years or over, depending on what equipment breaks down and needs to be replaced. In this case, we have significant replacements of check valves at our Weston Mills Pump Station that triggered this.
Right. Council President, this helps to maintain our sanitary system, correct?
Correct. This is for all six of our sanitary pump stations. Again, yes.
Okay, at this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to the public comment on the resolutions only. Again, you have up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolution, please approach the council by approaching the microphone. If you could give your name and address for the record, and the item number that you're talking about would be great.
Yes, Charlie Cradville, AM Street, only a couple to ask about today, we'll go to page three, item 12. Can I get an update on this matter, spending another $10,000 representing Judge Skovitch, the musical court administrator, and Miss Gay, for the counsel of the case?
Yes, quite freshly, Council President, members of council, the last resolution that we adopted, I believe the final bill, the case was dismissed. Unfortunately, the plaintiff has decided to make application to have his dismissal reconsidered, and there was a motion to amend the complaint to make additional defendant, defendant to the Cape City defendant, so we have to revisit it after this.
Thanks. Move on to the, or, we'll back to page two, the, oh, sorry, yeah, right, number nine. Appreciate the dialogue on this. I do think that it's unusual for this council to discuss settlements, and I think it shouldn't be. I think that there's a lot of matters that end up in court involving the city, and they get settled, sometimes for large sums of money or very significant concessions, and this council isn't even necessarily informed, let alone approving of it. I understand this is because this is a tax matter, that it's coming up when you're agenda, and you've got to approve that settlement. But I wanted to ask how the council feels about that. Do you feel like you can get enough information about the cases where the city's spending money? Would you like to see?
I think there are a little of them. Just hope save that for the public, because it's just for Horizon.
Right, I'm asking a question based on it?
No, based on the lawyer who took care of it, and the saving of millions of dollars, I think it's good.
Great, great. So, would you like to see other settlements come before you, like for example, civil cases?
Yes, they come along, they'll come along.
Well, they typically don't, it's my fault. I'm saying that, you know...
When they come to ours, we'll take care of them.
Mr. Council President, if I may, I think it's important to just, like, it's part of the conversation, that just press something's on, on a resolution, doesn't mean you don't have information on it, just to make sure that's clear.
Right, absolutely. And I guess I'll get to it in my later remarks, but I think the issue here is that these matters are often addressed through the joint insurance fund, which has poor track record, and, you know, going forward, you're in a new JIF now, maybe they'll keep you more informed, maybe they'll do a better job, but in general, I have concerns, and I'll follow up in the next part. Anyone else on the resolutions only? Seeing none.
What's the resolution, second? Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have the public, or we have items for discussion by council. Obviously, July 4th coming up, please be careful, especially around youngsters. Obviously, the fireworks, a lot of them are not allowed. Our police are overwrought with a lot of falls and stuff like that, but if you see something, please say something, just so it doesn't either burn a house down, or close our fire department to get out there, or, God forbid, causing child to die. So, just please be careful.
And then on that note, we have our child, our fireworks, that's tomorrow night, professionally done. So, instead of the children doing it, just come down to Boyd Park and see them.
Yes. So, we are about to open up the public portion of the meeting. Public comment for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Again, if you could give your name and address for the general record, we appreciate it, and your respectful comments.
Me again, Charlie Cradville, Sabino Street, New Brunswick, head of New Brunswick today. I want to start with some, something really positive. I thought that Juneteenth Parade Festival was another, in a series of excellent events. Was not really making a good thing to the Performing Arts Center, but I heard that was good, too, and want to thank everybody who was involved in organizing and supporting it, and it seemed like a good time was had by you all, and people, you know, got some education as part of the program, so I appreciated that. I continue to be concerned about the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. The city was a member, founding member in the 80s, and tried to leave on New Year's Eve. Basically, everybody cut and run and said, "We're going to abandon this JIF," and the, and resulted in the state overturned that and said, "No, you have to have a proper dissolution plan, you can't do that." So, New Brunswick is now in two JIFs. We're in the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, which still has to carry out all its obligations. Can you please ask, is the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund able to make all of the claims payments they're supposed to?
Mr. Chami?
I think Mr. Cradville should ask questions of the JIF, the Middlesex County Municipal JIF. You intend those meetings?
When's the next meeting?
I don't have that calendar in front of me, sir.
Is there a scheduled next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Can you, you know, write me tomorrow and tell me when the next meeting is?
I suggest you look on the website tonight, and if it's not there, also look tomorrow and make sure that they're reported.
Okay.
It is posted as well.
I was just on my website today, I didn't see any info for a future board meeting. Maybe I missed it on the chat.
If there is a meeting, it will be posted as well downstairs on the monitor.
Okay. For the record, I'm still trying to get the minutes from the December 31st meeting. This was the meeting that was held on, you know, shorter than normal notice. It was not recorded, unlike all the other meetings. This is the one where everybody said, "We're going to cut and run and abandon the Middlesex County Municipal JIF," and I requested, it's my time, I requested those meeting minutes in April. The JIF confirmed, they received my request on May 20th, and I still don't have the minutes. So, to say, "Oh, just ask your question in the JIF," is like, you know, saying, "Oh, well, just, you know, jump in the Marerton River and maybe that will solve the problem." They're not being responsive, they're not honoring the law, and my question is very valid, because I can say right here, I've heard from multiple employees that they are not getting their claims paid, their workers' comp claims, or their money that's owed to them. Workers, your people, your city employees are not getting paid, and I think this needs to be addressed. I also thought there were some things that were going to be addressed from the last meeting. Didn't we, wasn't it said there was going to be some discussion of pedestrian safety? Did, is there any update on, you know, we had loss of life on Sedan Street, I know there was... Yeah, the traffic commission is working on it. That's the update? That's the latest I hear, that I have. Okay. Pretty, pretty weak update, to be honest. I mean, this is life and death for some folks, people have lost their lives, their lives on Sedan Street, and, you know, I'm just not, not seeing what, an appropriate response for my elected leaders, you know, pushing it off to a commission. It's not, not appropriate. You need to, we need to take action yourself. So, what are you going to do about Sedan Street? Do you have any suggestions? Yes. Okay. Yeah, I think you need to make a protected bike lane, and I have the existing bike lane that's there. I think you need to do a traffic study. I thought that somebody had hired to do it, but I'm not hearing that update. Is it true that Frank Few Engineer is doing a traffic study? From what I understand, there's a traffic update coming sometime. Mr. Duels?
I can give an update, but I don't want to take Mr. Cradville's time.
Thanks. Yeah, can I, can we ask, at the next meeting, there be an update on both items, the traffic safety on the JIF? Can you, can you ask for that?
Will ask.
Okay. I also wanted to ask about redevelopment. You all pushed forward this project on Jersey Avenue, the developer has run out of money and not even finished the demolition. This was supposed to bring affordable housing to New Brunswick. You push out Prab, you push out small businesses to have this project go forward, and now there's nothing to show for it. What do you have to say? And what are you doing to bring more affordable housing to the city?
Is there any update on that, Mr. Duels?
I can definitely for the next meeting.
Okay. I'm sure the builder brand is affordable housing, comments coming up there and stuff like that, so I think there's some. That's how good it is.
Council President, would you like to provide what takes an hour out there?
I just, Council President, can you address also the allegations and the second that some employees have not been paid, because it's important?
Yes, as it relates to, you know, unfortunately, sometimes with your Cradville, it's a language that's a little dramatic, jumping into the Marerton, but there has been no abandonment of the JIF, and there's not been a cut and run in the JIF, and I think it's important that these ordinance, what they're used, are clarified. The, I'm not aware, many employees have not received it, and if Mr. Cradville has a list, or he has, I'd be glad to take that from him, and I would encourage him to have his employees contact my office. Those payments should be made to the employees, and if they are being paid, and if they're not, I'd like to know why, and they will be. As it relates to the traffic commission, the matter was brought to the traffic commission, the traffic commission sent it to our professional engineering staff who specializes in traffic matters. That staff is reviewing all the police reports from the previous five years on the city intersection, and they'll report their recommendation to the traffic commission for them to review, that meaning that commission meets again September, and I'm more than confident that we will have all reports, and the commission meets in September to take necessary action.
In the meantime, I heard from the police department that they had patrol cars going through the area, working on that in different places. Patrol cars have been here and there, so they're working on speeders, which is exactly what happened here at Sedan and Lee, so obviously, they're working on it.
Council President, I believe Mr. Cradville showed concern about our affordable housing account. I mean, New Brunswick still continues to be one of the leading communities in the state of affordable housing, so much so that we have 124 units under construction right now, and I will leave an update on the property you spoke about, but hopefully this will relieve some of this concern about people having housing in New Brunswick.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Paul Mclaws, from Sedan Street, New Brunswick. So, Mr. Duels just provided a brief AMS update on pedestrian safety. I remember the last meeting, when I asked about it, he said that there would be, you know, some type of response from the traffic commission, so I'm just curious if there was any specific delay that caused us to not have a, for answer, it sounds like we're quite a ways away from having anything on that if the next meeting is coming to September.
If that's the next one, I know, next September, right?
Right, I'm sorry, this is, I thought that we're going to get a response from the traffic commission, but I said that I wouldn't have a response on the, on the traffic commission.
Right, and that's the response?
The response is that they will discuss recommendations in September, and any action that they might take on the recommendations to be applied.
They're getting it every day, basically, and then finally, in September, will come up with something.
It's a significant study that they're undertaking.
Right. I understand that's a significant amount of work, you know, obviously, it is a significant problem, and the problem's going to continue at least at the same level of severity that it currently is, where any data, action's not taken, so I understand there's obviously a lot of work that needs to be done, and you want to do it well, and I respect that, and I just hope that everyone is moving forward on this as quickly as they can, because it is very consequential.
I think they are.
Well, another thing I wanted to ask about, we've had some truly hot days lately... Verizon filed tax appeals back in 2012 and every year thereafter, dealing with their equipment and the percentage of market share that they have relative to hardwired copper equipment. Without going into the nuances of the statute of case law, the case came out in a different municipality, which basically sided with Verizon, saying that the city can no longer tax this personal property. As a result of that, our tax council worked with the attorney for Verizon and we arrived upon a settlement, quite good settlement, quite frankly, because had we had to reimburse Verizon for the taxes we collected back since 2012, that number was over $3.4 million. So the deal was is that we only reimburse taxes for calendar year 2025 and we don't tax on the personal property going forward. This resolution authorizes that particular refund of $108,000, which they take for calendar year 2025. And this, like I said, is the final piece of the resolution of that litigation involving Verizon.
Okay.
Well, I think they put $3.4 million.
Good time, Mr. President. Mr. Valenti, item number 16, the milling of various city streets, which ones?
Yes, Council President, specific to this resolution, that'll be the milling of Reed Street between Joyce Kilmer and Livingston, Redmond Street between Paul Robinson and Throop, Howard Street between Rowan Avenue and Joyce Kilmer, Juliet Street between Lee and Remson, and Richmond Street between Nielsen and Burnett.
Right. Item number 23 has a change order that's not too big, $30,000.
Yes, this is an annual contract that we bid for the maintenance of our pump stations, of which we have six in town. We generally use, I believe it's a $35,000 or $50,000 limit. Some years we're under, some years we're over, depending on what equipment breaks down and needs to be replaced. In this case, we have significant replacements of check valves at our Weston Mills Pump Station that triggered this.
Right. This helps to maintain our sanitary system, correct?
This is for all six of our sanitary pump stations.
Okay, at this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to the public comment on the resolutions only. Again, you have up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any members of the public who want to speak on the resolution, please approach the council by the microphone. If you give your name and address for the record and the item number that you're talking about would be great.
Yes, Charlie Cradville, AF Street. Only a couple to ask about today. We'll go to page three, item 12. Can I get an update on this matter? Spending another $10,000 representing Judge Skovitch, the municipal administrator, and Ms. Gait, for the case.
Yes, quite freshly, Council President, members of council, the last resolution that we adopted, I believe the final bill, the case was dismissed. Unfortunately, the plaintiff has decided to make application to have his dismissal reconsidered. And there was a motion to amend the complaint to name additional defendant, defendant to Cape City defendant. So we have to revisit it after the decision.
Thanks. Move on to the, or, well, move back to page two, the, oh, sorry, yeah, Verizon, number nine. Appreciated the dialogue on this. I do think that it's unusual for this council to discuss settlements, and I think it shouldn't be. I think that there's a lot of matters that end up in court involving the city and they get settled, sometimes for large sums of money or very significant concessions. And this council isn't even necessarily informed, let alone approving. However, I understand this is because this is a tax matter that it's coming up when you're agenda and you've got to approve that settlement. But I wanted to ask how the council feels about that. Do you feel like you get enough information about the cases where the city's spending money? Would you like to see?
I think they're a little off. Just don't say that to the public. This is just for Horizon.
Right, I'm asking a question based on it.
You know, based on the lawyer who took care of it and the saving of millions of dollars, I think it's good.
Great, great. So would you like to see other settlements come before you, like for instance, civil cases?
As they come along, they'll come along.
Well, they typically don't, is my point. I'm saying that, you know, when they come to ours, we'll take care of it.
Mr. Council President, if I may, I think it's important to just like, it's part of the conversation that just press something's on on a resolution doesn't mean you don't have information on it. Just to make sure that's clear.
Absolutely. And I guess I'll get to it in my later remarks, but I think the issue here is that these matters are often addressed through the joint insurance fund, which has a poor track record. And, you know, going forward, you're in a new JIF now, maybe they'll keep you more informed, maybe they'll do a better job, but in general, I have concerns and I'll follow up with the second part.
Anyone else on the resolutions only? Seeing none.
Second. Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaston?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Jeff Conieva?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have the public, or we have items for discussion by council. Obviously, July 4th coming up, please be careful, especially around youngsters. Obviously, the fireworks, a lot of them are not allowed. Our police are overruled with a lot of calls and stuff like that. But if you see something, please say something, just so it doesn't either burn a house there or close our fire department to get out there or, God forbid, cause a child to die. So just please be careful.
And then on that note, we have our child, our fireworks, okay? Tomorrow night, professionally done. So instead of the children doing it, just come down to Boyd Park and see it.
So we are about to open the public portion of the meeting. Public comment for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Again, if you may, address for the general record, we appreciate it, and your respectful comments.
Me again, Charlie Cradville, Sabino Street, New Brunswick. I'm there in New Brunswick today. I want to start with something really positive. I thought that Juneteenth Parade Festival was another in a series of excellent events. Was not able to make it to the performing arts center, but I heard that it was good too. And I want to thank everybody who was involved in organizing and supporting it. And it seemed like a good time was had by all and people, you know, got some education as part of the program, so I appreciated that. I continue to be concerned about the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. The city was a member, founding member in the eighties and tried to leave on New Year's Eve. Basically, everybody cut and run and said, we're going to abandon this JIF. And the end result is that the state overturned that and said, no, you have to have a proper dissolution plan, you can't do that. So New Brunswick is now in two JIFs. We're in the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, which still has to carry out all of its obligations. Can you please ask, is the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund able to make all of the claims payments they're supposed to?
I think Mr. Cradville should ask questions of the JIF, the Middlesex County Municipal JIF. You tense those meetings.
When's the next meeting?
I don't have that calendar in front of me, sir.
Is there a scheduled next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Can you write me tomorrow and tell me when the next meeting is?
I suggest you look on the website tonight, and if it's not there, also look tomorrow and make sure that you report.
Okay.
It is posted as well.
I was just on my website today, I didn't see any info for a future board meeting. Maybe I missed it.
If there is a meeting, it will be posted as well downstairs on the window.
Okay. For the record, I'm still trying to get the minutes from the December 31st meeting. This was the meeting that was held on, you know, shorter than normal notice. It was not recorded, unlike all the other meetings. This is the one where everybody said we're going to cut and run and abandon the Middlesex County Municipal JIF. And I requested, it's my time.
Okay.
I requested those meeting minutes in April. The JIF confirmed, they received my request on May 20th, and I still don't have the minutes. So to say, oh, just ask your question to the JIF is like, you know, saying, oh, well, just, you know, jump in the Raritan River and maybe that will solve the problem. They're not being responsive, they're not honoring the law. And my question is very valid because I can say right here, I've heard from multiple employees that they are not getting their claims paid, their workers' comp claims or their money that's owed to them. Workers, your people, your city employees are not getting paid. And I think this needs to be addressed. I also thought there were some things that were going to be addressed from the last meeting. Didn't we, wasn't it said there was going to be some discussion of pedestrian safety? Is there any update on, you know, we had loss of life on Sedan Street, I know there was a...
Yeah, the traffic commission is working on it.
That's the update.
That's the latest I hear that I have.
Pretty, pretty weak update, to be honest. I mean, this is life and death for some people, have lost their lives on Sedan Street. And, you know, I'm just not seeing what, an appropriate response from my elected leaders, you know, pushing it off to a commission. It's not appropriate, you need to, you need to take action yourself. So what are you going to do about Sedan Street?
Do you have any suggestions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you need to make a protected bike lane, and I have the existing bike lane that's there. I think you need to do a traffic study, I thought that somebody could hire to do it, but I'm not hearing that update. Is it true that Frank Few Engineer is doing a traffic study?
From what I understand, there's a traffic update coming sometime. Mr. Gules?
I can give an update, but I don't want to take Mr. Cradville's time.
Thanks. Yeah, can we ask, the next meeting, there'll be an update on both items, the traffic safety and the JIF? Can you ask for that?
We'll ask.
Okay. I also wanted to ask about redevelopment. You all pushed forward this project on Jersey Avenue, the developer has run out of money and not even finished the demolition. This was supposed to bring affordable housing to New Brunswick. You pushed out Prab, you pushed out small businesses to have this project go forward, and now there's nothing to show for it. What do you have to say? And what are you doing to bring more affordable housing to the city?
Is there any update on that, Mr. Gules?
I can definitely provide an update for the next meeting.
Okay. I'm sure the Hill to Brand is affordable housing, comments coming up there and stuff like that, so I think there's some.
Thanks, have a good day.
Council President, would you like to provide us a text now or after?
I just, Council President, real quick, can you address also the allegations and second that some employees have not been paid?
Yes, yes. So as it relates to, you know, unfortunately, sometimes Mr. Cradville's language is a little dramatic, we jump into the Raritan, but there has been no abandonment of the JIF, there has not been a cutting block in the JIF. And I think it's important that these ordinance, what they're used are classified. The I-not-aware employees have not received it. And Mr. Cradville has a list, or if he has, I think I should stake that from him, and I would encourage him, have his employees contact my office. Those payments should be made to the employees if they are paying. And if they're not, I'd like to know why, and they will be. As it relates to the traffic commission, the matter was brought to the traffic commission, the traffic commission sent it to our professional engineer staff who specializes in traffic matters. That staff has reviewed all the police reports from the previous five years on activity in that intersection, and they'll report a recommendation to the traffic commission or to their due, that meaning that commission meets again in September. And I'm more than confident that we will have all the reports and the commission meets in September to take the necessary action.
In the meantime, I heard from the police department that they had, you know, patrol cars going through the area, working on that in different places. Patrol cars have been here and there, so they're working on speeders, which is exactly what to happen here at Sedan and Lee. So obviously, they're working on it.
Council President, I believe that the crowd showed concern about our affordable housing count. I mean, New Brunswick still continues to be one of the leading communities in the state of affordable housing, so much so that we have 124 units under construction right now. And I've already given an update on the property you spoke about, but hopefully this will relieve some of this concern about people in the housing community.
Okay. Thanks, great. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Paul Mclaws, from Sedan Street, New Brunswick. So Mr. Gules just provided a brief AFS update on pedestrian safety. I remember the last meeting, when I asked about it, he said that there would be, you know, some type of response from the traffic commission, so I'm just curious if there was any specific delay that caused us to not have a, for answer. It sounds like we're quite a ways away from having anything on that if the next meeting is in September.
It does next, I know, next September, right?
Right, I'm sorry, this is, I thought that we're going to get a response from the traffic commission, but I said that I would have a response on the Stormy Long Traffic Commission.
Right, that's the response.
The response is that they will discuss recommendations in September and any action that they might take on the recommendations.
They're getting it every day, basically, and then finally in September will come up with something.
It's a significant study that they're undertaking.
Right. I understand that's a significant amount of work. You know, obviously, it is a significant problem, and the problem is going to continue at least at the same level of severity that it currently is, whether you pay that action's not taken. So I understand there's obviously a lot of work that needs to be done and you want to do it well, and I respect that, and I just hope that everyone is moving forward on this as quickly as they can because it is very consequential.
I think they are.
Another thing I wanted to ask about, we've had some truly hot days lately with there was a heat wave. I'm curious if there's any update on Code Red, how many Code Red days we've had this season, and how many people have been utilizing the service when it's been open, especially since they've got a new location versus the last time we had the Code Red season.
Do you have any?
I'd be glad to provide, I don't have the number handy, but I'd be glad to get that for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's really valuable information to know. And then at the previous meeting, and I believe for a number of meetings prior to that as well, the council has been asked about the Superfund Act, the New Brunswick Farm Bill Commission has recommended, but the council act and the councils were from a number of speakers, echoing that recommendation as well. And you said you'd think about it, but did not have any specific response. Have you thought about it and have you decided whether you are going to take action on this?
Yes, we have thought about it and still haven't come to a consensus.
Is there, are there any questions that are waiting on your minds about, you know, what's delaying a decision on that?
If it is, it's up to those people to find out.
I mean, those people would be...
The council people, the commissioners, they feel...
Right, and those people are here, so if there's any questions or concerns that people, that the council people have, it would be a good thing to voice those concerns, and then people may have the answers to those concerns, could reach out and find those answers. So do the council members have questions or concerns or thoughts that they're currently still weighing their decision on that matter, that they'd like to share with the public? And anyone that could help answer those questions?
Obligatory response that I have to explain to them is this is the state law, and I work for them, and I'm not allowed to always discuss, Council President, without a resolution.
And I don't have any questions, I support it.
Likewise, I don't have any questions, I do support.
Okay, so we have one person who, of course, is not allowed to, you know, support or not support. We have two people that have no questions in support. You know, where do the rest of the council members stand on this?
No questions. No questions.
So no questions, you have a position?
Yes.
Okay, so we have three council members who are opposed and don't have any questions. Do any council members have questions? Do we, do we ever get to, do we ever get to know? I think that would, you know, people would appreciate, no?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, well, I think that's a shame, and I think especially since there does seem to be some level of support and interest in this among at least some of the council members, it's a discussion worth prioritizing and coming to a decision soon. And again, there are people out there, out here, who are willing to discuss further and answer any facts and concerns you might have, but you don't know what to do that if you know what it is.
Mr. Gules, I do this.
If I may, Mr. President, I know that the state and the county has advanced Vision Zero in terms of pedestrian deaths and vehicle traffic, and I do believe that all the cities and all the towns in New Brunswick have to be part of that. Is that, is that true? Please helping to provide and give information so we can appreciate Vision Zero.
The city participates in that. Professor Mr. Goldberg for administration, very active with that program, thank you for that, that point.
Anyone else who would like to?
I was going to say that, just to remind you that the council works on consensus, right? So if there's a consensus, it will move forward, if there's not consensus, it's, the solution, whatever, we'll move forward. So this is not just anybody's personal opinion, so we do have consensus, we want it to be included.
Okay, finish now, I'll be destroyed by anyone coming up there.
I'm going to have your ready.
Hi, yes, I know more. Due to where I'm here to really speak upon, well, first thing I would say, give my condolences to the Martinez family, that old Martinez, from, he's a city employee. Honestly, I know a born and raised in Joyce, come apart, so I can say that's the third loss with the Martinez family, who's been an employee of the city for the longest on record, over 45 years or so, with helping out the city, where I think the mayor and the city should really look out for his family, due to where it was two weeks apart, he had lost another one. But like I said, my condolences goes out to the Martinez family, and when I know over 35 years, you don't have to have the same blood, I consider family, still heartily, but yes. The next thing I'm going to say, I, I'm just, if I'm not happy with what I'm seeing, I'm going to, I guarantee you, due to where, what, the Lord is not happy with what he's seeing as well. I had a situation with the police department. Okay, now, why am I having so many situations between other departments adding on, on, on that, due to where, why? Because New Brunswick Police Department, Robert Wood Johnson, was illegally, said that I tried to OD off of OxyContin, implanted a chip in my body, saying, ooh, that keeps trafficking, due to where, do I have my rights, Mr. Shammy, to, to, to any paperwork? Why New Brunswick Police Department and Robert Wood Johnson did that? Any, any answer? Because it's strongly not over drugs, and like I said, I know the Lord is on my hands, due to where, for the second time or more, due to where, how my results have been coming back way normal with OxyContin. I cried the videos and pictures as well, due to where, what my prescription would do on 5/27/2025. I got it today, day, day. So like I said, it shows you, due to where, and I'm totally telling you, due to where I'm not, no, no, no addiction, and I don't, I tell you each one involved, but just trying to make me look bad, hateful. Why? Because you hate to see that, what, a black person does something the right way here in New Brunswick, due to where, like I said, now, honestly, the situation, what, that was moved to the, with the fire department, with me getting very disrespected, how many times the fire department came over to my house, oh, nothing's wrong, nothing's wrong, trying to make it look like I'm damn crazy. But like I said, everything happens for a reason, where, wow, after all those times, it's not whether it's based on what your meter says. How many signs and how many pictures did I put up on Facebook, due to where the show, wow, what are the sockets burning from? I haven't used sockets in over 10, 10, 10, 10 months or so. Ooh, what was this sparking for? What was this situation for? Due to where I took mine seriously with the New Brunswick Fire Department, and did I, did they, did they take me seriously? Oh, no, that's that cra- cra- crazy girl who, due to where, like I said, ooh, she's the one that OD'd on, on, on that, due to where, ooh, now with the housing authority coming over there, where, what, oh. Now, now, after the landlord says that he can evict me, just that I turned, I turned in all the stuff, the show, due to where for my safety and the city's safety, oh, now, now the, now the housing authority, oh, he has a right to do this now, after, after they seen that I've been evicted from over there, due to where, why? Because I provided the evidence to show, due to where, what? What I was going through, the fumes over there had nothing to do with the medication that I was on, like I said. How many urine tests and how many, due to where, what, of my pills, due to where I showed legally, and then the thing with the city, with you spraying chemicals, spreading word, or thinking, telling people, okay, ooh, chemicals, ooh, they're going to, people coming here and like it's going to affect me. No, what you were doing is, due to where, to show the difference where, anything that I touched, I'm right-handed, due to where, what, it would cause soreth on my, on my body, where me and my doctor, we just discussed it today, day, I can't take my clothes off and serve the areas. The reason why I've been keeping my skin covered, due to where, like I said, yes, that has a reaction to anyone, due to where, testing to see if they're, what, they're ODing or whatever. Like I said, I'm not no drug addict, but like I said, I didn't overtake no pills, and like I said, that's been all these months that you're hiring, to keep monitoring, monitoring me. Why don't you just tell them the reason why, Mr. Shammy, due to where, what? What did the police department do illegally four times? That's why you're monitoring me, got me on track, where everybody watching, ooh, where am I going? What am I eating from the store? What, I can't go buy a change of bag, I can't go buy tape or anything? But like I said, I know the Lord is in my hands, because every time the piece of evidence is coming into my hands, and like I said, everything's not about money to me, but like I said, for all of you that keep believing in the devil, you are a devil now, and you won't let your power day. Goodbye, I'd like to forget names, but I do let you lead on.
Anyone else have a follow-up question to speak for this time? Seeing none?
Move the meeting adjourned. Senator? Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaston?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Jeff Conieva?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. He gets the turn.